There's a better process.
Well, understood.
Good evening. I'd like to officially welcome our party from Mount Vernon to the council meeting, the second one for January, January eighteenth. And we're now called to order, and the first item on the agenda is to see if there are any changes to the agenda. I might mention that to people online, Greg Thapen, I think you are probably on with regard to a partial wreck appointment, possibly. That is not on this agenda, but I was told it's going to be on the next meeting's agenda. So that's for your information. Anything on the agenda or ready to approve this?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
All right, so second.
Scott.
So moving to second is to approve the agenda. All favoritism, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. The next item we have is open communication. Is there anyone in the public here to speak to any item on the, it's not on the agenda tonight? Is that all?
Yeah. I thought you were in Mexico.
Well, I got my weeks mixed up.
Oh.
Glad to have you, Paul.
Yeah, and I would be there, but my, I understand what it's like to have a deer hit. My truck is still in the shop and my wife's on call, so here I am.
What, Paul?
So here now the, I think for open comments section, I think we'll move on to the consent agenda. We've got two items, minutes and an appointment to the eminence board. Any questions? Or can we move forward on that motion?
I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, thank you both. And motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented. All favoritism, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Getting into the first of five resolutions for approval. First one, only construction of certain public improvements for the running plans, fixing a date for hearing, taking bids for the improvement known as Palisades Park Boulevard project. Chris, do you have anything to add to that?
No, just, the only thing I would say on either of these resolutions, because they're almost identical with the exception of the project description, the dates are basically all the same. I wanted to point out that the date to consider the bids, I put in as the Wednesday after President's Day, because it's not on the agenda to move that date. Historically in the past, we have moved that council meeting from President's Day. I use Wednesday's date. The only thing I would say is that you pass these resolutions when I put moving that meeting on your next agenda. It's pretty much locked in.
That's good.
So.
Any other items? Chris, nothing. I have one.
Nothing.
With that point of clarification, I would move approval of resolution one dash eighteen dash twenty twenty-three A.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Move to second to move forward on resolution one eighteen twenty twenty-three A. This is a roll call vote, so I think I'll let motion co-roll.
Tyler.
Aye.
West, yes.
And Rose?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, another resolution, only construction of certain public improvement, improving preliminary plans, fixing a date for hearing, taking a bids, projects in one of the Davis Park Improvement Project. Questions about that? Anything to add, Chris?
Nothing.
This was one of the last, the last year's council, I think, has kind of accelerated to get it moving, so that's good, so.
I would move.
That is good.
I would move approval of resolution one dash eighteen dash twenty twenty-three B.
Thank you, Paul.
I'll second that.
Great. Moving to second to pass resolution one eighteen twenty twenty-three B. That's another roll call vote. If you are ready, Marshall.
Rose?
Yes.
And Tyler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Angle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Round of resolution three, approving the disposal of city-owned property.
Most of the, the city-owned property that we're getting rid of would be this legacy equipment that's left over here, including those hard desk chairs that brings the president in the background. So with most of the office furniture, we have our best luck with taking it down, but sure plus the monument is over there for us.
In one vehicle?
Yeah, yes, in one vehicle.
Little unplanned.
Well, that was the deer.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
One of the better subject lines.
I would move to approve resolution one dash eighteen dash twenty twenty-three C. And I'll second that.
Thank you, Greg Scott. Motion floor, pass resolution one eighteen twenty twenty-three C, disposal of city-owned property. Are we ready to vote? Marshall?
Angle?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is resolution on setting salaries for current officers, employees of the City of Mount Vernon fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. For this one, I'll preface comments here in that I'm going to kind of reiterate a conversation or a statement that was made by Mayor Hampton about thirteen or fourteen months ago with regard to the city manager's position. Now that I have the title mayor of my name, I see listeners of openings for city managers in Carroll and Huxley, and I can't remember what other towns, last fall were either much smaller than Mount Vernon or offering much more in salary than Mount Vernon's present scale. I turned to Councilman Scott Crowes here to do some research based upon the data we got from the Rennell compilation that was put together maybe two years ago. They had the police, public works, had a bunch of different positions. And I started twitching a little bit last fall when Marion, Marion City Hall had a couple openings for city manager positions, as well as Iowa, that was the first one left last fall. So I thought we needed to be a little proactive here. And Scott put a lot of information together here, basically in the last year, we, what had been like two point seven, two point seven, two point seven, to seven point four, and it was like seventy-seven hundred ninety-three dollars. And for this year, I am proposing an eight thousand even, and maybe need to do this again, have this conversation again next year. And whatever, I don't want to hold Chris hostage just because he has young kids in the school system, but I know that replacing somebody in that position is going to cost us way more than eight thousand to even come up with a position. So that is what I would offer. You've been good about working in the process of giving me information and data that I could share with him in a form of personal evaluation, so that will happen after this step happens. So that is my component, that's my input on that, and it's kind of based on some past presidents that Jay established, and thanks Scott for doing all the research on this. So anybody have any questions about the methodology there?
I will move to approve resolution one dash eighteen dash twenty twenty-three D.
Thank you, Scott.
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Moving to second to pass resolution one dash eighteen dash twenty twenty-three D. Are we ready to vote on that? Ms. Marshall?
Rose?
Yes.
Angle?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all. Motion passes. Last resolution, considering public hearing for the City of Mount Vernon fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, maximum property tax dollars.
So the only thing that I want to add to this resolution after meeting with Brad Marshall today is, as I stated to them, I think we've reached an inflection point when it comes to the twelve ninety-nine that we have historically kept our tax levy rate at. I don't want to overexaggerate, but I've been, this is, started my seventh year and it's been twelve ninety-nine for the entire time that I'm here, and it was like that before. We can keep it twelve ninety-nine again this year. It requires us to move dollars around into other terms. I am essentially putting the council on notice that we need to get somewhere in the thirteen dollars and fifty cent range in the next couple to three years. So if you would like me to keep it at twelve ninety-nine, I can do that. My suggestion was going to be somewhere, going to thirteen fifteen this year, adding another fifteen cents to follow on here, and then getting to thirteen fifty on basically the third year. That is if the state does not put anything else on our plate.
Well, I wondered if that would integrate into it in the memo that you sent out, the email you sent out, which I think a lot of us have heard on the news anyway, that they're going to propose lowering taxes, lower taxes, right?
Yeah, and essentially what the state's been doing is, is, at least on the one proposal that I've seen thus far, they're, they are capping what you're allowed to capture for growth in a year, which.
After a crazy.
In a perfect world, if everything happened, everything, every community continued to grow, and you got your, your three percent that you were expecting, things would be fine, except you have to factor in the rollback, which then fluctuates how much you're actually able to tax, or how much of those become taxable dollars. And the whole system becomes a lot more complicated. Now, in some circumstances, they have backfilled some of those dollars. The change this year was the change to commercial tax, where they take the first hundred fifty thousand and basically treat it like a residential unit before they go up to ninety percent of commercial value. So lots of changes. We're kind of on the end of receipts right now, just waiting to see what else happens, but yeah, you know, three percent, even, even at three percent, when inflation is hovering around eight percent for the last almost eighteen months. Not very likely, I believe. I do not have the money to get it back, but I can just go on. Snipes dollars off. So my suggestion, unless I hear otherwise, if you have a strong opinion, would be to take our levy rate from twelve ninety-nine this year to three, thirteen dollars and fifteen cents.
Thirteen fif-
Fifteen.
Okay.
Fifteen.
I was trying to, because I had to figure out the percentage increase. I was thinking, that's like an eight percent increase or something. Could we do this over two years?
Yeah, so I'd like to look at like fifteen cent increments for the next three years.
Right.
I mean, they're making a gradual increase.
And really, like I said, our levy, our current levy rate is twelve dollars and ninety-nine ninety-nine.
That'd be a one percent increase.
Yeah, that's okay. I just feel like we need to qualify, quantify that. I think we're at about twenty-four years.
I think it's more than that. I was going to guess about there.
I mean.
At twelve ninety-nine.
Since it, yes.
Yeah, for Marshall.
I've been here for twenty-four, almost twenty-five this year, and it was at that level.
So I think that needs to be moved.
That's a good point, you're right.
That is, you know, really significant for, for us that long.
There should also be noted that nobody wants to be sitting in my chair when you're the one after twenty-five years that recommends increasing it. But yeah, there's just been a lot of, and I don't want to make it sound like tampering or anything like that, but there's just been a lot of changes made at the state level to counteract some of the issues that they've seen on a national level. Housing prices have gone stack high and based upon our current tax system, it just, it does create some issues for people. And so we're still working with the state legislature and hoping that we can curtail some of the changes, but we'll continue to move on regardless. Yes, I think if we could gradually do the increase over the next three years, that would hopefully make it a little bit more viable.
Consider us forewarned. And the action of this resolution sets the first two public hearing dates, and that dates is February sixth, twenty twenty-four, establishment at this point, and eventually we'll have to.
I would move resolution one dash eighteen dash twenty twenty-three E.
Thank you, Paul.
And I'll second.
And Scott. We'll catch that. Paul and Scott. Motion to approve one dash eighteen dash twenty twenty-three E. And if you're ready to vote on that, Marshall, please.
Tyler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Angle?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to mayoral proclamations. Proclamation establishing the month of January is Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month. We have Teresa Davidson on line here, and she preferred to be here per person, but she didn't want to head out on the roads tonight. Teresa, do you have any statement to make?
Sorry, I was on mute. Tish Young is actually on. She's the O O of the, and she has. I'm Tish. Hi, guys. Thank you so. I just wanted to thank the mayor and city council and council members, everyone for bringing this proclamation forward. Want to thank you for your support. Mount Vernon holds a tight space in our heart. Chief Shannon has been a part of Chains Interrupted's partnership and support for quite some time, from your schools to creating safe passage for a fundraiser, to, you know, just helping our team understand some safety mechanisms. So I am grateful for your partnership. I'm grateful that Mount Vernon takes it seriously and understands how important awareness, prevention, and education are with anti-human trafficking efforts. So thank you for taking this time tonight. We appreciate it very, very much.
Thank you, and I believe congratulations in order for being the volunteer, if I remember correctly, the.
Yeah, thanks, God.
Presenting the last week herself, so congratulations, sir.
It was last week. Thank you so much.
Any other comments from you guys? Otherwise, I'll read the proclamation into the minutes here. Assumption of month of January twenty twenty-three is Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month. Whereas human trafficking is the exploitation of a person to force fraud or coercion, this is common in the United States, most often in the form of sexual exploitation, forced labor, debt bondage, and whereas one of the world's fastest growing crimes is the buying and selling of people, whose growth has been accelerated in recent years due to isolation, economic hardship, increase in abuse, and online activity, communities in eastern Iowa continue to see an increase in the number of people victimized, with Chains Interrupted serving over one hundred survivors in our area in twenty twenty-two. And whereas prosecutions for these horrific crimes, which denies human dignity and freedom, and fuels organized crime, have decreased, with only three individuals being convicted in Iowa's federal courts for human trafficking in twenty twenty-one. No convictions who obtained in Iowa State appellate courts in twenty twenty-one. And whereas, even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to be missed and go unreported due to its isolating nature, misunderstanding of its definition, or the misdiagnosis of its indicators. And whereas, every business, community organization, faith community, family, and individual can make a difference by working to protect the vulnerable within their sphere of influence, by addressing the problem of internet sex trafficking and pornography, choosing products that are not made by forced labor, and by becoming more aware of the problem and possible solutions. And whereas, City of Mount Vernon joins Chains Interrupted, Mercy Medical Center, and St. Luke's Hospital in their dedication to providing community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, training, promotional services to survivors of human trafficking, in collaboration with law enforcement. And now therefore, I, Thomas M. Weasber, heir of Mount Vernon, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of January is Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month, and encourage all our citizens to become more informed in this growing problem, to be diligent, and report suspicious activity, and to work towards solutions to end trafficking in all forms in our community. For assistance with this, reach out to Chains Interrupted at three one nine three six four zero two two two. If you see something that doesn't look right, reach out to the National Human Trafficking Outline at eight 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 three seven three seven eight 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 eight. As a witness thereof, I appear to set my hand and pause to be affixed to seal the City of Mount Vernon, Iowa, this eighteenth day of January twenty twenty-third. Signed, Councilman Weaver.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome, and thanks for coming forward and making this, the statement hearing about there. So if you want to be on the forefront of that, thank you, Tish Young, for being engaged in this worthwhile cause.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're ready to move on to motions for approval. First item is the claims list that Marshall sent out.
I will make a motion for approval of the claims list.
Second.
Motion on the floor to approve the claims list. If there are no questions about it, if we're ready to vote on it, all favoritism, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item two, discussion consideration of sitting on public hearing date for ordinance adopting the International Property Maintenance Code.
This is in line with our building code, so Lynn County utilizes the international building code. This is the International Property Maintenance Code. It will actually benefit the city in the fact that it's an established statewide code versus an independent filter by us. So this was one of the requests that Lynn County had of us when we signed the contract to allow them to take over and do some enforcement for us. So just getting this process moving.
This is a step in the process of getting Lynn County, or is Lynn County on?
Lynn County is on. This is a step in the process for them to be consistent with the code that they're utilizing countywide.
So they don't have to, you know, our code and theirs.
Yeah. And it does make it a little easier for them just to walk over to the county attorney's office and say, there's a violation of this legislation.
We don't need to make exceptions, okay?
So this is just deciding the public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I would move approval, or I would move we set the public hearing for the adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code to our first meeting of the year?
Correct.
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Moving to second to set up the public hearing date on this adoption. If we're ready to vote on that, all favoritism, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, discussion consideration development agreement payment to Ju Smith and Greg Ralph for the corner sing-along building. Council action as needed.
Looks great. No wasted enough time, so.
But based on tonight's weather, it's a good decision.
Very much so.
I move to approve the development agreement payment to Ralph and Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Just confirming, the total was slightly over fifty thousand. It's right for us to assume that they're going to cover the difference and work.
Yes, so we, the council granted fifty thousand dollars towards the effort.
I just want to clarify.
It's good to see that the fifty almost covered, which is as best as given in the year down, a big chunk of itself.
Right.
They just got approval for the group from the U P C as well, so I would imagine that all aired and started.
So somebody was working on it last week, so.
So they're moving right along.
Okay. Don't think we have a motion there, do we? Marshall?
Oh, yeah, we did.
If there are no further questions, if we're ready to vote on that, all favoritism, number three, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item four, discussion consideration of video equipment purchases in Mount Vernon as a police department construction project. Doug, where?
Thank you, council. What I've done was put in front of you a couple different quotes. We looked at for our building project and our interview rooms specifically for video processed from there. We currently use, was formerly WatchGuard. They were bought out recently, probably two years ago, year and a half ago, from Motorola. That transition did not go well, very smooth at all, and it was a nightmare of a headache for us to continue to operate from that aspect. Right now, things are going, they've got, they've got the bugs worked out, and it's kind of working again. I had several conversations with Chris about it. It's one of those deals that we've been with that system for a long time, deployed that in all of our vehicles in our office. It's uploading the video and managing it in the evidence library, and it's an expensive process to jump ship and go to another vendor in a tune of probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that. So what we, looking at, knowing all of that history we've had the past year, we've been with WatchGuard for probably fifteen, twenty years as a, as a company when they were WatchGuard itself. So I'm hoping Motorola kind of gets through the transition and works from that standpoint, so I'm comfortable making this request because, A, it's the cheapest option out there for us. It's an addition to our current system by adding in camera systems in the, that portion for our interview rooms, which will tie it right in with our evidence library. Same thing with our patrol body cameras and our car videos and everything else. Every other option was, again, going to be close to that hundred thousand dollar mark. So I think we can continue to try to, try to work things with Motorola. Hopefully they get their company figured out and their service figured out. There has been many, many departments in Iowa jumping ship because of the same exact issues. We're not alone in this pain, but right now, things are, seem to be on the uptick and improving from that standpoint. Kind of the same thing with Tri-City. I reached out, got a couple different quotes for video surveillance systems, adding in cameras everywhere the public would be inside the building like we did before, door access system, control measures and stuff like that. And Tri-City was very competitive in what they are. Again, they, they put in the initial setup, so they already know it's there. They were able to add on to it and at a pretty economic price. So I'm very comfortable making these two recommendations to council for our building project.
So is this new money, or is this already part of the money that we've approved for the?
This is part of the overall project. So we intentionally left the equipment out of the bid, knowing that we would have to purchase it separately. But it's part of the same group of dollars. This would be one of probably a series of at least three that you'll see.
What was the, the projected total, one point two two? Okay. So this is, this was baked into that?
Yes.
This is just allocating.
So the only, the only comment that I made when we bid the PD was, if we have to use all of the contingency as part of the, the construction project we're going to be over.
Yeah.
If we don't, we could probably come close to breaking even on, at least at what we expected for.
Sure. Yeah, with the last couple of meetings, we've approved electronics for this room and now for the police station. So we have brands banging new electronics in two thousand and twenty-three that hopefully will last.
This is just.
For a decade.
This is just the surveillance video system. For the training room will be one of the future asks coming forward yet. We haven't fleshed that out completely yet. But this is the security cameras around the building, inside the building, the door access systems, and then the, the WatchGuard Motorola portion is for our interview rooms specifically to tie into our systems there.
We were expecting a couple hundred thousand dollars for the, just equipment.
What are the other two specialized asks that you think you're going to get on this project?
So the equipment similar to this for the train room, and the third was?
Lockers.
Lockers.
Lockers will probably be on the next council meeting. I've got, I've almost got that one wrapped up. There'll be lockers for, obviously the locker rooms, but then evidence lockers for the submittal, so that we have a refrigerated locker. The officers can walk in, put them into a submittal locker, and then our, they don't have access to them again, and our evidence technician can come in and pull them out and enter them into evidence from that standpoint. And then a weapons locker for the garage, so when the officers are out of shift, they can secure their weapons and the next shift can grab theirs and go from that standpoint. So it shouldn't be too bad.
Realistic ask there.
And, and just to note, there were, we're kind of locked into Motorola for now, but there were competitive bids on the second portion, the forty-nine and change.
Yes. It was actually more expensive to go the other way, but it would have also required us to make more drastic changes citywide.
That's a hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's basically what I refer to, is it's working well enough for them to go ahead and continue to watch them make progress. The alternative is to spend a lot of money on you to plan for, to make a full schedule.
Even for the, even for the more competitive price points on some of the equipment, then we're operating two systems. Our cars are in one system, and our interview rooms are in a different system, and we got to share both of those with the county attorney. So it's very, it gets very convoluted, and I'm, you know, I'm very comfortable with this process to keep it clean as well.
Well, and that is a move approval of quote number, we'll have to do that, the quote for Motorola for eleven thousand one hundred sixty dollars, and a quote for Tri-City for forty-nine thousand one hundred nineteen dollars for improvements to the police station.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Last. For the questions, Tish Young, process. If we're ready to vote on that. If we're ready to vote on that, video equipment purchase, all, for all ready to vote, all pay with motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck with installation and rest of that process. We're just starting now.
Hopefully someday.
Discussion consideration of contract amendment, contract that Noah marketing on the city website for the explanation from Chris about why it's not complete yet and how to finance it.
And really, they, they're ahead of schedule compared to what they submitted. My fear is with Laura being gone and not having the ability to bring somebody in, just the process of which, I do not have an individual that I can put this on. And Laura was the liaison between DeNovo and then all of the department heads, making sure that the department heads created the content and answered the questions that DeNovo needed to keep moving forward. So I met with DeNovo and asked the question, what it would take for them to go ahead and finish the content right for us and accept fifty-five hundred, which is far less than the money we're going to be saving not paying somebody for at least the next couple of months. So I'd like to use that savings, let DeNovo do what they do and continue to, you know, fall behind, and this is selfish to a certain extent because it falls back on my plate and we're in this budget, so.
They're still going to need to have a contact to go between, right? Who's that going to be?
Yes, it will still be me, but I will have to do far less review. It's more or less I can just receive the information and give it to the individual departments to do their specific review, but I don't necessarily have to go and thoroughly review what they're putting from a content standpoint, so.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea because it keeps the momentum of the project. It was one of our key initiatives that we wanted to have taken care of, and I trust that DeNovo is going to get it done and will do a good job.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, they listened. They took our initial comments from our meeting on colored font setup at the last meeting, and we were something four weeks difference and had it completely revamped. I like it. I like where we're going. So hopefully when we get a little bit more of a clinch out of it, when we get in front of the council, we'll, we'll listen.
They've got all the department head's information?
So yes, we've been, well, so Laura had been requesting information, and she had about fifty percent of DeNovo's questionnaire basically answered, but that doesn't translate to the actual written part yet, plus the other fifty percent of the items that they need. So this is, the one thing I do like about DeNovo is they're fairly consistent. I mean, they, they stay on you and make sure you're getting them the information in a very polite way, but.
But there's not money with them.
Yeah. It would be a huge benefit to us, and I think, like I said, get this project, keep this project on cast.
In my experience in one development, clients cause more problems than the development itself, so we can keep it moving nice.
My other, I also believe there will be some consistency in the writing.
That was my thought when I was, well, that was my thought when I looked at this. I mean, our staff has a ton of excellent skill sets, and I don't know that any of us were, or any staff were hired as writers, so, you know, letting them do what they do is probably a better thought, so.
Do you estimate what a project may be done this summer?
The expectation is it was supposed to be done this summer, and I see no reason at this point for it not to be. And the interaction, like, it's a very clean website. It's not, as we explained to DeNovo, Mount Vernon does not need a flashy fancy website in order to sell itself. You can put pictures of Mount Vernon on the front page and it will sell everything that it needs. So they completed that, and like I said, it's, it's simplistic, yet very user friendly and much cleaner than the existing version.
What's the other going? Did they change some hours or something like that?
We will have no less than three that I've talked to so far. So LBC staff, Parks and Rec will have the ability, tash out at PD, and then whoever are in place for Laura's position will be able to, or at least here, so. Others have access and will be able to do it, but those three will sort of have some redundancy in the system.
Since you mentioned cleanliness of the site, is one of the takeaways from this, one of my concerns whenever you have a lot of cooks in the kitchen is we all have different design sensibilities. I might like this font, somebody else might like that color, and all of a sudden you've got seventeen different things going on on the site. Is there going to be some guideline of consistency across if it's this headline, it's this font with this size, if it's this text, it's this font with this?
That was, yeah, that was margin border number one.
Excellent.
So that.
Because otherwise, we're by the middle of the road and we've got the same.
We do not want to be back where we're at, and it's not links. There's a lot of information on our current website. It's just you have to know where to run to get it.
Sure.
Excellent.
Motion, you probably have most institutional history here, but is this the original website from when we first started this process? Is that twenty-four years old too, or?
No.
This is not the first one?
I think there was one before this one.
Okay.
Chris, I, I would be remiss in saying this. I know you said summer, but just don't forget about the surge in traffic that comes at Chalkoakamie. So, you know, I, I don't want to overly push, but I, I just would like you guys to be cautious.
No, I think.
And I know that from when I did the search and end marketing for CDG several years ago around Chalkoakamie.
I, I think this will hopefully cross my fingers that this will actually speed the process up, so there's not as much traction for it. I would say that the department heads, by tasking them to write something versus tasking them to review, I don't know if you've ever seen me type, but having somebody else put it together and disallow it to us to review will be time also.
I just thought I'd point this. Okay.
I move to approve contract amendment to DeNovo for you up an extra fifty-five hundred dollars. Hope the writing and continuation is second.
Great. So second?
Second.
Moving second, moving forward with DeNova on the website developments project. All pay with motion, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Moving to reports, saw a report from Chief Brandon, plus a car deer incident, but any questions for him or anything to add, chief?
That was it. I was just going to bring it up with the, the car deer and let you know that it costs a lot more to fix it than the value of the vehicle. The good news is the, we've got a car on order. It's been on order for a while.
The, you ordered it six months ago.
We ordered it in August, and according to Lynch, I called them shortly after the car deer hit, and they unfortunately said it's probably going to be a little slower than it was last year. So we were eight months out last year and maybe more than that this year, so.
You said with staffing, it's.
With, you know, right now, we're okay because we're down staffing and, you know, so it's, we're not, we're not pressed and we'll be okay. We've got vehicles to use and, and put more of them on. If it's, we get too long-term, they won't want to. I'm, I'm also checking other vendors to see if they have some. There's, we've purchased straight off the lot before out in Des Moines. There's kind, there's some dealerships out there that have the state bid portion, so we're looking at different options that way if we need to as well.
Moving on to public works, the evidence report outside today. Any questions or anything to add on?
Oh, I agree.
Good luck with whatever tonight. Love you. Parks and Rec report, Mr. Siders. Issues?
Like the thirty-five patron increase from December twenty-two, or twenty-one to December twenty-two. That was close to zero. And I'm quite pleased with the adult speaker series.
Yeah. You know. They're showing tomorrow.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you. We're going to heck with you, you'll be in the front row.
Right ahead.
Any questions? Ready?
Right.
Much questions?
Sit on my hand.
So assuming there's no questions for the Parks and Rec report at this point. CIP, we have a version two or three, whatever in front of us here.
So what you have, normally I like to do five years, but you'll see when you take this home and take a closer look at it, that, you know, can you think more than three years right now is a kind of effort easily. The front page would be fiscal twenty-four, and this is probably the most important page that relates to what is going to happen over the course of the next year. So these are the projects that I would be looking at doing. Now, those items that are in green are items that have argued to either secure funding or have given the green light by council to start with. Of course, some of them are carryover and some will actually carry over into following years. So at the bottom, thanks for your great suggestions, I put a little color code for you, legend, so that you have an idea on what all of the various colors mean. If you start to look at years two and three, please do not forget about the fact that the total dollar amount is thirty-three and thirty-two million dollars. The pool discussion enters in, in those two years, and I put full options in there. So it's very unlikely that we're going to spend.
The red, blue, two, four, and four.
Twenty-five and a half million dollars, so keep that in mind when you're looking at that. That does skew the numbers quite significantly. But they need to be there so that you have an idea of what is coming. One of the other larger projects that is going to be hanging out there is the downtown those are involved in Chalkoakamie. Notice that the asphalt in this three blocks, so it starts to go south really fast. We were going to start talking about this, that your COVID hit, we did not want to talk about it the year after COVID hit, the downtown business, and then hit hard enough with COVID. So within the next year and a half, it'll be, we will need to act. Now, there is one point five million dollars listed for that project, and my assumption is that it will be a project of that magnitude if we do a full reconstruction of those three blocks plus water sewer. So we do not expect three blocks of concrete, plus one and a half million dollars. That would be the entire redevelopment, but it will potentially close that area for at least a year. It's, if, if we're going to go through a, a whole season, I, I don't think I would be exaggerating, Ellen, if I said that it would take at least nine months to a year to do water sewer compaction and then a full reconstruction.
So this would be similar to what we experienced, those of us that liked to golf at Saddleback in Solon, turning on Highway One, going south, and you take that left with Saddleback, that was shut down for the better part of nine months.
Yeah, and, and part of it is because some of those utility lines haven't been touched originally or, yeah, closed. We wouldn't have any idea what we were getting ourselves into, or the contractor would. Quite frankly, the project scares me a little bit, but it is going to be an necessary topic and something that we're going to have to pay close attention to. And again, when we're having conversations about, as I said a couple of meetings ago, when we're going to talk about a pool and some of the, what I would call wants, you need to be fully aware of what the needs are going to be.
Well, plenty of time to talk about that project, though.
Yes, yes. There will be, so what I want to do is get a figure, CIP in your hands, and what I will do is send out the actual Excel, the three Excel spreadsheets for you, so you can zoom in and do what you want, but.
So it looks like there's several line items that you carried over because they can have it in, and you have those here based on our decisions, right? Okay.
Paul, you have something?
Yeah, yeah, so when the downtown streetscape's going on, I'm expecting that some of the original sanitary sewer line gets preserved and displayed in City Hall.
If, if we can keep it in one piece coming out of the ground, I think that might be interesting.
So I was going to add to that. I have been involved in a number of different streetscapes prior to working for municipality. And so depending on what the utilities are, they could, they can easily phase, phase projects out, like keep half of it open, work on one half, you know, but typically contractors are required to keep businesses open, so having, having a poor traffic too there. So it sounds extremely overwhelming when we talk about doing a project like that, but it can go, but don't get me wrong, it can go south too, but it can go very well, but.
But as we've done in the past, similar to the pool, you know, I think the, the goal is to let people know that these projects are on the horizon. If they want to start asking questions, they can ask questions. A lot of this, you'll notice, even though that I have a, you know, a column where I'm putting these, this particular funding, we get about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in franchise fees each year. This has one point one million dollars worth of franchise fee request. So not all of these projects, even though they're on the CIP, are necessarily going to be funded by this council, can be. The issue is going to be, they're not going to go away. So all of these projects are going to be necessary, at least as far as your consideration, and you'll see that compounding effect if you put off projects till the next year, they're, they're just going to, that price tag is going to continue.
The worlds aren't going to get better by the end of summer. One, I just, one note or question on the, the second fiscal year twenty-four, the nature park at Oak Ridge Trail, where is Oak Ridge?
That's where I was.
Is it where he works? Oh, wow.
Well, of course, that's where Ellen works.
Oh, okay.
So it's, that is.
Well, I already have those pipes in my, my backyard.
That you do? Plan to come up off the existing trail up next to the dog park, down Business Thirty, and then where?
Across the intersection there?
Yes, so the planned intersection is somewhere between Oak Ridge and, you know, and basically that farm field. So that is the trail trying to make a connection and tying the two halves together.
Okay, thank you.
Last year, the project that affected every homeowner was the Chase Republic. This year, the project, the project is still on, is going to affect every homeowner, is the water meter project. There were some hiccups with the one project, you know, last July first, but I'm sure there'll be some hiccups with this process, but more we get the word out there that there's another generational change. Jim Aino-Breck told me, he was mayor, he was the mayor when this building was built. He said that they were talking about putting out radio free, probably not the same technology this was in eighty-eight.
Right.
Water meter reads in eighty-eight, and he was glad that we were looking at this in the last year or so. So it goes back to eighty-eight that there's been interest at this table for getting this resolved and with best technology and so on. Probably glad to wait now because of the technology thing, but.
I'm pretty sure the levy was twelve ninety-nine at that point.
Yeah. Only recently, I'm raising it.
Yes, you know, pardon me for really wishing that I didn't have as many generationalists close to one another, but we're going to manage to do the, the, the radio, going to the radio read not only for these upstaffed time to do other things, you no longer have to put a staff person out, play those for five days. The other part to that is currently, if you have a, a water leak and it's going to your, your meter currently, we're going to find it a month too late, and you're going to be strapped with a radio alarm, but we can build a new system in to have alerts. So if you start to have high water, you might have it for one or two days before you can at least notify you that something's going on.
Well, I, I think it, I think it's the right thing from just a staff point of view, but then, you know, one of the, from the sustainability committee aspect, you know, not wasting that water.
not wasting that water that is unnecessary to run through the system. It's the right thing for the residents and we talked about this in 88, so.
Best practice, though. We haven't had a lot of conversations with homeowners that have had water leaking somewhere off and not finding it to live a month. But those are not pleasant conversations to have and try to come to some compromise where everybody has a soft landing. That is tough and it isn't possible. This will take that totally off the table besides the state of the game.
Chris? In my opinion, wait finding signage could fall within economic development because we are trying to drive traffic to our downtown areas and our retail businesses. Couldn't then we use lost funds for that?
No. Because we we might have the potential to use franchise fees for that, but we don't for lost. The the questions for lost are very specific. So streets and sidewalk are streets and sidewalks, one category. Yeah, we see basically with one trails and then. So those categories are established. You could, and my suggestion would be, when it does actually come back up for a vote, that we not be that specific. But currently, while we're in this period, it is.
Any questions for this version of the CIP? Study more and study all three years here eventually. Reports, Chris?
Nothing to add. We will be interviewing next week, Monday, Thursday and Friday. So happy with the candidate pool. Hopefully, we will be able to make an offer after next week. I know Marsha is going to be extremely happy if I can make an offer after next week. And then I believe that the city planner position closes next week as well. Not as many applicants there, but I do have quality over quantity. And so hopefully, we will be with that interview and see how how excited they are to start. And I would love nothing more than to be fully staffed for at least one month out of my tenure. But it hasn't happened since I first got here.
It's good to want this.
It is. It's good to have gold.
Let's say you think you're regret later, so. Thank you, Chris. Three things I was going to mention. First of all, the county supervisors had a reorganizational meeting a couple of weeks ago and the new chair, like Louis Sunblock, wanted us to go out in the community and have possible supervisors' meetings out in the community. So I volunteered over at City Hall when we get done with the merger and everything else here. So he was very interested in that and so he made to take us up on that a couple of months down the road if they do go through that process. We used to have a lot of meetings on certain days. I'm not sure what the schedule is going to be, bay or time, whatever. We may be hosting it's dozen city, dozen county staff doing their thing, a couple of help technology up and that, so on. Second thing I was going to mention is I caught a three hour emergency services disaster, emergency economic recovery. I mean, there's there's recovery from a disaster at the first level. I'll get the floodwaters down and get the trees all cut up and put away. But economic recovery was the focus on this one, so there was a gel attendant in Auburn as well. But it was interesting seeing the 50 small people in the room address economic recovery with a state expert on a macro level, one month, you know, one week, three months and six months after a disaster. It was good exercise. The third thing was Tamara, Tamara Marcus, county sustainability coordinator, who wants to host something here in April. It's somewhat sustainability focused, but it's also environmental justice, environmental justice services event. So I've got a sustainability meeting here tomorrow night and we'll see what leverage we can get from members, see how they want to react to it, what we want to do for that. But we'll be hosting that at some point coming April, with Earth Month of Week in there.
I don't know if it's a sustainable sustainability.
Twenty two people. Send the email list who they all are, but.
Well, that's great that there's that much interest.
Keep getting, I've added three to this meeting.
That's great.
Anything else that has come before this council? If not, call us adjourned. If you're much, definitely hopefully that's 55 best, so you get out of there.